Okay, Mr. Okay, Mr. Carter.
Okay, good, uh, good morning, members of the school board, Superintendent Simmel. I, I, I have to tell you, this is my tenth student progression plan coming to you. This is now a decade, and I'm excited about that.
It is the best, I will say.
I, I, I'm happy for that. I wanted to, again, at this time, ten years ago, Mr., I, I came in. I want to introduce Mr. Rowland. Mr. Rowland is not officially, it's July one, but has basically been in the realm of the secondary director.
He just walked out after you said that.
We, basically, our process is this. Uh, I wanted to kind of share with you that, um, in our process for identifying the student progression plan, we basically asked the schools to kind of maintain a copy of student progression plan, and as things come up, we basically have guidance counselors, assistant principals, principals, kind of earmarks or basically identify some areas to clarify, or to change, or to bring up for discussion. And it's a good opportunity for the school personnel and district staff to basically have a common understanding of the, of the language in the student progression plan. We basically then schedule meetings in the springtime. It's always challenging, when is the best time to do that? Because of legislation that comes out, because of the assessments that are being administered for our students, but this year, we actually had elementary schools met one time, and that was March eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. Middle schools, we actually met twice, March thirty-first, and then May fifteenth, and then the high school, met March thirty-first and June fifteenth. And again, we basically asked the principals to send representatives to the meetings, and we basically start to pour over information in the student progression plan and look for some changes. One of the things that we had talked about for this coming school year in fifteen, sixteen, was to have, uh, one combined student progression plan, because as we would meet, we would basically have conversations about enrollment or registration, and we'd have conversations about exceptional student, uh, students with disabilities. And we kept seeing that there would be, um, similar language in all three of these. So, we basically went in then, in June, started to meet the educational services department to kind of bring this together to a combined document that you have before you. And so I thank Mr. Hebert, he facilitated that process, and brings to you that, that common document. So if you look at it, the, uh, and I want to thank Amy Crowell, because she basically kind of put the pieces together in a format that you're looking at today. So typically, what would happen in the past, you'd have a director of the secondary and director of the elementary come to you and just share the changes. And we're going to do that, but not just that key personnel. We're also going to be including the other folks from their respective departments. So I'm going to give to you right now, a copy of what are the changes. Now, for you to go through this, it's very, very different, so I'm going to give you a list of only the changes, and again, the big changes. Please understand, we basically did, uh, made little changes, like remember guidance counselors, now they're the certified school counselor. Uh, we basically made those changes. We changed some things from English to English Language Arts. So we're not going to go over those little minor changes, but we are going to go through some of the big ones. So, um, I, then last night, I did actually put it, yesterday afternoon, I did put it in your Dropbox. You do have a copy of it, you've got a hard copy today. So I think what we're going to do is, uh, just number one item, is that the format is definitely changed, all three levels. And we basically, through Mr. Hebert's leadership and facilitation, we looked at a variety of other districts to look to see what their combined student progression plan looked like. And we picked up some things that we liked about it. But we basically sat down, and again, it's commonly referred to as just a process of watching paint dry, because you basically sit down and go through it item by item, but it was a really good opportunity for us to, um, get some clarification on some things. So I'm going to then, uh, turn it over to Mr. Simon, because he is going to address his portion of the combined document, and that is the assessments. Okay? You have any questions for me before we get started?
So we're fortunate to say that most of the changes that occurred in testing assessments occurred last year. So, and then the only update that you'll see, the progression plan is that eleventh grade English Language Arts will no longer be a tested subject. So that was determined by our governor to be off of the assessment schedule. And the second change you will notice is the post-secondary education readiness test. Three years ago, the Department of Education legislators, uh, supported a movement to test students for college readiness using the PERT test. If students demonstrated college readiness either on that test or the ACT SAT, they then would progress in their schedule and selection of courses according to their liking. If they did not demonstrate college readiness, those students then therefore would have to be placed in a college-ready math class or a college-ready English writing class. That no longer is the rule, so therefore, the PERT testing is no longer required. Please note that we will continue to use that PERT test for students who choose to participate in dual enrollment, we're back to that topic, or students who need a comparative score, who have not mastered the Algebra I, and a score of ninety-seven will serve as a comparative score. The plus of that is that that assessment is, is a twenty-five question, can be done in less than an hour. The negative side of it, of this change, not posted in our progression plan, is that the state is no longer funding. So any of the funding, Mr. Blocker here would say one more again example of a, of a mandate, there's no support, so all of that, from this, we still have funds from previous grant, but from this point forward, there'll be no longer state funds to support post-secondary education testing, whether it's for dual enrollment or for comparative score.
What is the rough cost?
It's, it's very inexpensive, it's less than three dollars.
Okay.
And the student, when the student goes to a Central Florida campus, or community college campus, or college campuses, take the PERT test, again, only accepted at a two-year or college, not at a university, it's about twelve dollars for them.
Okay, just to kind of remind you, is that we've kind of jumped right onto page eleven, or page thirteen there, so just to let you know, the registration, enrollments, basically, that has not changed, but this is how the Reddit is here, so that way at the end, if you have some questions overall, we'll be more than happy to share those with you. Okay, the next pair is exceptional student education, Mrs. Haynes is going to address those changes.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Haynes.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all of you.
Is it afternoon?
Not quite.
No, you're right.
As Mr. Carter said, we were asked to just come forward and, and talk about the significant changes. And it was about a year ago, we met, and I talked to you all about my take on what the getting rid of the special diploma option was going to mean to our students. I think statewide, there was kind of a panic, um, but I assured you that we weren't losing that option for those students who were already enrolled and, and had on their IEP that they would be special diploma. But it opens the option for all students to get a standard diploma. And what really is the basic difference is what the transcripts are going to look like. So the diploma options are, there's a lot of different ways that our students can earn a diploma. I think the biggest change is that those students who are, used to be special diploma, who are going through access points and taking Florida alternate assessment, will now earn a standard diploma, and their transcripts will clearly demonstrate what coursework they've done to complete that. So their curriculum is modified, there's an attempt to really increase the rigor and the expectations for our students who have significant cognitive disabilities. And one of the positives that we've seen since this change came about is some of the students who were on the special diploma track, um, are now switching over to standard diploma, and I think we're going to see that more and more, because there's a comfort with that. But another significant change is that now students have the ability to defer accepting their diploma. And we had actually two different students that took that option this school year. What that means, and there's different criteria that they have to meet in order to be able to defer their, their diploma, but they have to have completed all of the graduation requirements, they have to be, um, have, the IUP team make the statement that they require a specially-designed structure in order to support them to complete a program that they're in, and they have to be enrolled in a specific program that allows that. The two students that we had, for example, this summer, or this, this graduation period, one of them was enrolled in dual enrollment, and it was a student who really needed a lot of supports to be successful. That student was not able to stay in, in dual enrollment, so that student did not end up deferring. We went through all the steps, so that was an option, but the student ended up accepting her diploma, she completed all the requirements. Um, another student was deferring to get supports in a more community-based instruction and vocational skills. That student was not ready to go out on their own, they had done all the academic credits, but they needed supports in order to be successful transitioning into employment. And since we have an obligation to provide supports until a student is twenty-two, um, we were able to do that by having that student defer the diploma, and those are the only instances so far where that has happened. Those are the two biggest changes, and they really have not had that big of an impact. Um, I should tell you though, that, um, with the standard diploma option for students who are getting that through access courses, um, they must now score a four or above on the Florida alternate assessment. If they do not, then we would go through a waiver process, and the waiver for our, um, students on, on the Florida alternate assessment would be a portfolio that demonstrates that they've met certain criteria. So it's not getting rid of the rigor, but it's allowing us to have some flexibility in demonstrating how to achieve that. And I know you're just getting a chance to look at this, so please feel free to contact me at any time if you've got questions later on, but I'm open to questions now, if I can help with any that you have.
Mrs. Haynes, we've talked about it, and we've talked about it during our, um, high school pupil progression plan committee meeting, and we've talked about it. You've been so kind to work with some of our students as they come up to graduation, but one of the growing challenges we're going to have is because we've talked about the, the rigor and the height of our graduation requirements, particularly for our students that are not ESE and don't have the options of being able to get out of, um, having to pass some of the standardized testing. And we were kind of under the premise that we were doing always the right thing by getting people, our students, to help, more than we were about labeling them. And I've always been, as a former ESE student, I certainly value getting the help before the label anyway. Now the problem is, it seems to be that the state only gives us the option to really have an exemption from those standardized tests if they're labeled. And so is that something that we're going to be looking at to see what we can do? Because sadly, the states, the only option for some of these students is if they're an ESE student.
I hope to see that change. I know that there are other states where there are different accommodations, that any student who has a legitimate need for those accommodations are allowed them, whether they have a label or not. I don't know how long that will take us here in Florida to make that happen, but people with a voice such as yours, mine, and many other people in this room, are the way to make that happen. And I think the parents out there who have struggled when they have a student who has a 504 plan, for example, or a student who has no plan at all, um, we hear their voices every year between January and May. You know, the only thing keeping my child from getting that diploma is one exam, and the teachers are saying they've mastered the standards, and they still can't. Those are the people that I encourage to go and explain that to someone who's in the policymaking field, so that they have a clearer understanding of the damage that that can do to a student. The other thing is, if we want to keep those expectations high, we've had students who've had to take some of those assessments over and over again, but when they finally get it, the pride they have, you know, we don't want to hand out waivers as a booby prize. We want to make sure that we've let the student know, we know you can do it, and we know you need some extra support to make that happen. Whether you're an ESE student or not, we've got resources to provide them those supports. Are you seeing a big increase in parent requests for the 504? We have seen a marked increase in that, and I think we'll see even more of that. But part of that is because some of the rules have changed, so that they're more open to being able to get a 504 legitimately. But it, again, it shouldn't require you to have that. We should be able to, be able to look at student product and, you know, be able to objectively say, they have demonstrated that they understand these concepts, they're ready to move on, why are we making them go through these, jump through these hoops? But maybe in my lifetime.
Well, and I do think though, as a district, one of the places that we, we still need to be proactive is in our interventions, is, I think, we have to be also recognizing that if this is a student that's going to fall into a, particularly math, for example, as one of those issues, or reading, that we may, you know, in the past, we've been more interested in the intervention, and I'm, I'm fully supportive of that. I think we're going to have to go back to also saying, what do we need to do to get them diagnosed, so that we have that availability till we get a law change? Because we've got kids coming in as freshmen, and basically, we've gone several years to an RTI process, and this is the state, this wasn't the district, for those who, you know, who know, this was the state's model, to say, we didn't need to diagnose, unfortunately, until law changes, that is the only option.
Well, one of the things that we've been working with the schools on, we've had a district committee on multiple tiered, multi-tiered systems of support, which is the new RTI.
The new RTI, yes.
Yes. And the schools all went through a self-assessment process this school year, looking at what interventions do we have in place, what are we good at, what do we need to work on? And they've, at each level, elementary, middle, and high, they've set a goal for this next year, and many of them are going to really be focusing on our core instruction, our Tier One, what are we doing right, and what do we need to get better at? But if a student's on tiers of intervention for a couple of years, then that's time to move forward with looking at eligibility. But the interventions are getting better, our diagnostics are getting better, and I think those elementary students, as they move up, we're going to have more and more of them that don't need the label to be able to be successful.
And sadly, it does come down to one test, that, that they just are struggling to pass, and they, they know they've got the standard.
The standard test, it gives that test, such as the test, who gives it, under what conditions, which I'll say the test, when three bells go off or fire.
Yeah, they're not.
Or they didn't sleep the night.
Or that it's, you have to have a rile environment, the white person having the test, uh, right direction. And I know I was reading through this, and I noticed something about, well, you send a student, in this, this, to a physician to double-check that weight, which physician are you sending that person to? If you expect that student has this problem, then don't send him to a cardiology. You have to choose the right. So that, that concerned me a bit.
And how many of us would want our, um, performance to be evaluated based on our performance on one day when we didn't sleep well?
Oh, we said, it is, it's all composite, you find what it's wrong, it's such as one shot.
And even the test accommodations, we can't provide unless there is a diagnosis. So, you know, I mean, someone who can, who could take that test well if it was orally given, just will not have that option, so.
We're seeing more and more in these conversations with MTSS, where teachers will say, well, I provide accommodations to everyone in my classroom. Now that's what we need to see, that's differentiation. But if a student needs that, and is required, then we need to make sure it's officially on a plan to, so that they're getting, if they move across the hallway or to them.
But if we do that as an accommodation on a PYP, or a PMP, I'm sorry, um, that doesn't mean though, that it would correlate to a high-stakes test.
Correct.
And that's, that's my concern, because what we're doing is, we've been doing what's right for the student in district, but then we don't have that option on test day.
To do that on test day.
So. Anyone else have another question for us? Thank you, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Haynes.
Good afternoon, so.
Welcome home.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Um, we're going to take a look at the elementary section on page forty-three, if you'll read that page, um, this is on the portfolio review, and the, uh, the major change that came on this section was actually from, um, the Department of Education provided us language on what would be included in the portfolio. The portfolio in the past for our students, um, was basically a passage which a number of questions focused on a particular standard. When they switched and gave us portfolio information this year, which by the way, we did not receive it till January, February, March, um, as they kind of came in in slow segments, um, they switched the guidelines from being focused on one standard to assessing multiple standards. So we, um, quickly took the information with the research and accountability team, um, John Mullin was involved with that, and developed our portfolio online, so students could take the items on the iPad or through the computer if they wanted to go into a lab, and were able to use that this year. And, um, so this piece of information that's listed here is basically from the Department of Ed, and it's based on, on the changes that occurred relative to the portfolio for this year. Questions on that section?
No, but just to lift out, this is the option that I feel like we need for the high school and at the other levels, because if we had this option, you don't have to be an ESE student to be able to have a portfolio option, um, it's just available to those that need it. Thank you for this district, your team, your principals, um, when it came to testing this year, because you portfolio pretty much every third grader, we were able to accomplish a great deal, and not miss, miss the vote on any testing requirements.
And I will tell you, because of the way the assessment occurred this year, and not getting the results back, and we had to come up with a different process, we had already done a lot of the work, so we were able to make decisions on kids, we had information that we needed from the assessments that we gave them, so.
And you know, this has changed so much, because initially, when the portfolio came into being, it was sort of like file folder of stuff, stuff, and when you read it, you thought, you can't evaluate anything on the standards or what the child, it's just, you know, nice and, and, uh, interesting, but I can't evaluate. And by doing what you all have done, you've got specific things to look for, then you can evaluate, you can do good about that.
And, and we made it digital, so that way, it's easy for the teacher to access that information. If you look on page forty-nine, this is on the interim progress reports, and, and you may know that, it's commonly known to as midterms. Um, the, the major change here was, in the past, last year, we switched for first through fifth grade, we went to an electronic midterm, which means it was emailed to the parents that had Skyward, if they didn't have Skyward or access to a computer, they could request a paper copy. So this past year was the first year, I heard no complaints from parents about that electronic, um, occurrence of the midterm. So we were able to make a shift in kindergarten, so this year coming up, our kindergarten midterm will also be, um, electronic as well. So we will not be doing any paper copies of midterms or interim progress reports to parents in elementary unless a parent requests. So if a parent calls and says, I don't have a computer, I'd like a midterm hard copy, we can provide that for them. And those were the major changes for elementary. Questions?
Glad to be doing that, thank you.
Regards to the middle school, there were not a lot of changes in the middle school for promotion to the high school. Again, requirement of three successful courses of English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, Social Studies, Career and Educational Planning, the Semester PE, all of those things are in the plan, it's in there. Uh, I'm going to draw your attention to page eleven, and I know I'm going backwards, but it's basically part of our general, because it applies to some other areas, uh, not just the middle school. If you recall, legislation came out, and we basically went to our FOIL meeting to discover that they had now removed the requirement of the intensive reading at the secondary level. So basically, no more did they basically, the state say, all Level Ones are going to be in an intensive reinforced. At our first meeting that we had in March, I kind of preempted the, uh, committee, both at the middle school, and I think Mrs. Nobles did it at the high school as well, and just said, this is possibility of being passed, how do we feel about this? And this, we had a long conversation. Now, I just want to kind of share with the board, last year was our first year for implementing new instructional materials for the intensive class. We basically had, uh, progress monitoring going on with our reading. So what I basically started was, uh, conversation at the principal level, to really talk about, after our first student progression plan, that this was a possibility, I started having conversations, both Gale and I, with the high school and middle school principals. And the resounding, uh, response from them is that, you know, we still want that requirement. Uh, we still feel it's very, very important that we provide our students with the opportunity and support to read on grade level. So what we did was, we actually did change the language, and so I'm going to read it to you. Citrus County continues our, uh, commitment to provide support to students who are below grade level in English, English Language Arts. In addition to the double block of time in the English Language Arts course, and using available testing data and student, uh, the student placement will take the form of one or more of the following. So basically, we are going to be looking at historical data, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, we're going to look at the levels at which those students are in, and then we are going to require them to be placed into an intensive reading class. The big quest, though, the big part that we put on there is, any deviation from this requirement would be subject to principal approval. Again, a principal just doesn't basically say, hey, I'm going to arbitrarily pull that kid out of the intensive support, whether it be through a car PD class, or, or delivery, or whether through a, uh, reading, uh, course. We basically, we would both pull that problem-solving team, and then be able to pull some other data, and then have some substantial, um, evidence to be able to say, okay, I think this warrants this child coming out of the intensive class at any particular time of the year. Okay?
Any tip or comment?
Doesn't necessarily, so basically, if there's a concern, that could be, it could come from the school level, from the parent level. Again, we understand that that one day of testing on the English Language Arts, FCAT or FSA, should not be the determinant to place that child in that class for. So that's a big change, and we basically have really kind of outlined our course, our course offerings for next year. Uh, at the middle school level, we will have, again, I've, I've shared with you that we had shifted last year to a full block of English Language Arts, combining the reading and the writing standards together to align themselves to the Florida standards, and this would actually have then a forty-five minute additional intensive reading for our Level Ones, possibly on Level Twos that are destroying. At the high school level, because of the, um, block schedule, we basically had a conversation about having the English One, English Two, English Three, and English Four, but then also provide, uh, two courses in the Courseco directory for high school, writing and reading, which actually hold the standards that support the, uh, FSA, um, uh, DLA test. So basically, they would get that support all year long, in that, so they had English One, and then they'd have the, the reading or the writing.
Anyway, we don't know this, the teacher education, the psychology education, are the, um, such, such, such studies in that, are they being trained in reading or not?
Yes, I believe that's the foundation, is the reading, because again, I think what you're alluding to is that, at the college level, for teacher, teacher preparation, yes. I, I just say that, is that part of our conversation with both high school and middle school principals is that it's not just the standalone English Language Arts, it's going to broaden out to those science, success in science, success in math, success in social studies, and also curriculum technical classes.
So for a long time, content areas did not have needed that, so now they aren't.
Yes. Okay, the others.
Before you move. So this is why I value so much that the pupil progression plan, for those of you don't know in the audience, um, and watching, this is, this is a curriculum policy plan, and so this is also what we as a district set out as policy. Mr. Carter, I, I was very big on lobbying, uh, for the legislature to remove this mandate. As an ESE student, I would never have seen PE, I mean, I would have never have seen the outdoors as an elementary student, I would have probably never seen it much as a middle school student, and in high school, I probably wouldn't have been able to take in the courses that I needed to or wanted to because of the law. So I've been a proponent. So I've been a proponent to say that parents need to be also a part of that, and also the student needs to be part of that. And I think you've, you've accommodated that largely in policy here, but my concern is, what will be our intended practice? Because I do see here that, that the principal's approval would still be necessary. So I can, I can name several students that I know that are not in our school system when they particularly got to middle school, because they left because they knew they were a Level One student, they weren't going to be able to go and their child go out and be part of PE. And they said, I just can't do that to my kid. So they, now, the answer would have been, we don't have much options, we would have to put your child in remediation. And while there is great benefit to having in, in remediation, there is a loss sometimes to that young person to be constantly spending that additional time.
Yes.
So my question is, what happens in practice when the parent says, I don't want this for my child?
Just again, like they, when they take, uh, I'll, I'll relate it to the Excel conversation that we had last year, when we added the acceleration, and a parent comes to a parent, uh, to a principal and says, I want my child to be in an acceleration, take one of the four choices for acceleration. And basically then, uh, that letter would be written, principal would then assemble their problem solving team, they'd look at all parts of aspects of that child, and then make a determination, and then the principal's decision would then be final, there would no be, again, the other appeal process would be then, okay, it's going to go through the principal and then it would come to the district office. We would probably do the same exact thing. We'd look at some data that they're currently doing, some lagging and some leading data that we would look at in order to be able to, to be able to support that principal's decision to keep them in there. But basically, that's why we put in the student progression plan, it's still a maintaining requirement, but a principal would have that autonomy to be able to pull in those resources, analyze to see if it still is his, to that child's benefit to be in that class. But really, again, that's where it lies, as with the principal.
And the, and the same question would go is, I get to high school, and I know in high school progressions, we had this, this con, this question is, okay, my, my son or daughter wants to be in welding, my son or daughter wants to be in a CTE or
Right.
option, but they can't because they're going to need to be in a reading intensive speech class or, or, or other type of class, I don't want that for my child.
And that could be a semester, uh, for the reading and a semester in the welding.
Right.
That'd be to break it down by a four by four or to a schedule.
But will, 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 I guess, the, the, is there going to be that flexibility?
I think a principal would take that into consideration as far as, what is it that I could probably be preventing my child, but, but our children from basically exploring, learning, and gaining certification in?
Well, looking at his point with, with welding, um, when I worked over at Den E T I, I pulled the welding text, the electrical text, all those texts in there, for those that are understanding Scholastic Reading Inventory Labeling, the electrical course, that textbook was in a fourteen hundred, it's, it's high, so.
We had a lot of conversations when Just Reads came out, and that requirement came out about the technical manuals that are required for those courses as well, as being a very different type of reason.
It is a.
And important.
It's, it's a, it's a very, it's a big challenge for me.
So I lift that out for this board so that way you're fully aware of that, but Mr. Kennedy, I truly understand, uh, the, the concern, and, uh, again, that was the conversation that we had with the principals, Mr. Hebert, Mr. Roll, were both part of the conversations that we continually had about reaching that. And again, we may come back to you next year with some other language.
But you've, you've given some flexibility there with, with giving it to the principals, and so I'm, I'm, I can live with that for that, I just am worried about the practice, and I do have such great faith in our principals, but I know that kid, I know that parent that struggles, and, and I think that we're going to find there's more of them now, that there isn't a legal mandate.
I agree very much with Mr. Kennedy on what you're talking about, and I think sometimes, sometimes the creativity of, of the teaching
Yes.
in reading, teaching the reading, and if, if the person is studying nursing at college and you teach the English from the point of view of the nursing, and you don't have, don't have to teach the traditional, you can go into something else anyway, in middle school, high school, elementary school, you take a look at the individual, I'm very much a person who is an individual, learning, you're training individual, uh, curriculum, and you do it, and you're successful, but you force that child into an after-school reading program or in-school reading program, sometimes it just shut down, you just lost that child, and that's a very wrong thing to do because we have the ability and the system to make it.
Again, we have had so many, so much reading, uh, options, I mean, the cater program, which was, uh, career, the, uh, the CAR PD and getting everybody trained and reading indoors, so it doesn't necessarily all happen in the intensive reading, but it is for those lower students, uh, yeah, we get back on track.
And we've dealt with many of these situations because we know that it starts at the school level and, uh, parents, they consider it a roadblock. When it comes to the district, I've had Mr. Hebert, Nancy, Mr. Clutter, all of them meet individual parents, and we have given them before to parents to say, okay, we've had add and about, that we document every step, because many times when a recommendation comes from the principal, we know that they've got the best interest of that kid.
Absolutely.
We also know that we go in the Banceup studio, we keep another program, we want to issue documents, and then it comes back next year, but then some of the reasons I'm having.
And I'm so glad we have it as a local and even more so, school decision and not the state legislature telling us what to do. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Okay, I'm going to draw your attention to page fifty-five, and this is in regards to the grading procedures. You know, basically in two thousand six, we had a conversation when middle school, uh, requirements came out as far as a definition of what was successful completion. Well, we've had an opportunity because of the calculations from the state, if you recall, we brought to you a presentation this year on how high school grades were actually being calculated to thirty percent. So it really gave us that opportunity to really look hard at our grading practices, and I will tell you that they are going to be changing, and I think that the best thing, just to kind of share with you, is it is actually an algorithm that was recommended by the state for high school, but we brought it into the middle school to be consistent on a four-point-oh scale, and on page fifty-eight, we actually do outline what, how that calculation for a final grade, remember, middle school, four quarters, they're basically acquiring the A, B, C, D, and F, and it will come out to, um, a G, a G, a grade point average there, and then we basically align it. So I'm saying that instead of a point seven-five, it is a point six-zero for successful completion for a middle school course promotion.
With the F, we have to have.
Two point five? Two point oh.
Is it two point oh?
Yes.
High school.
Yep.
So those are the middle schools, those are the only changes, so I'm going to introduce Mr. Olin.
Before, just before we do that, um, you know, I think this is just a good time, as board members, we sit on these committees and, kind of, before we get into high school, because high school's quite a bit, to, I know of changes that we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Um, Ms. Powers and Ms. Balfour were the, on the committees for these two, so I wanted to make sure I gave you guys an opportunity, a lot of times, we've shared out what we found on each of these committees as we sit on them, and so Ms. Powers, I didn't know if you had some things.
And I did on the middle school and, and how we're getting into the elementary school. Overall, I want to make a statement about how I saw, it's like, so professional, we used to have the, the different plans, and then we'd go from it on one level to the other level, uh, but there was not a connection, it was just like, this committee does that, this does that, this does that, no connection, you're looking forward to what was going to happen. This, this one makes it not only very professional grit, where it's, it's like almost a syllabus to a course in college, and yet it has to continue, and I remember someone at the secondary one time, but, hey, you know, don't worry about it, the elementary school buzz-ins at sixth, uh, about fifth grade, don't worry about it at sixth grade, and that just offered to be so badly because a, a child's life continues and you have to know it all through those things. This shows the continuum of work, the continuum of growth that a child has, plus spelling out specifically what is to occur at each level, love that, it gets to the elementary student, I love the elementary, when you did the elementary discussion, loved it, loved it, and I went to the computer, I was looking at things about language and stuff, which I still have a problem, my computer up there, I started with like wheels and riding, and fixing, but I loved it, it was, it was critical information that you could get. Um, so I enjoyed that part of it, I got some books from you, I looked at the reading portion of it, and it spurred me on to get, I just, in depth and all of these, and, uh, to learn even more about it, and I'm sure it spurs those people on, the teachers, so you have a document to go by, you have the roadmap to Crystal River, you don't turn around and go to Wildwood, which most of the students, you know, you just get lost, it was, it's a document that lets you follow it. Very excited, very excited about the, um, the education, the professionalism, the involvement of the people on the committee, they're, they're not sitting back and saying, I really have some, I think I have some coffee and a few minutes to wind this thing up, they're not, they're there, interested to make sure everything is, is placed in that document that suits the child and that gives direction to the teachers and to the administration. So I'm absolutely thrilled, I'm so, boy, you know, the elementary student, hey, I've got, right now, with all this stuff, I've got a record of five, I'm going to do the next twelve issues, yes, and then beyond that, they're going to tell me what's going there, you know, I like this, this is a plan for my life. Uh, so I think you're a fantastic job, and I find it very interesting, I, I really do, always have found it very interesting. I was reading the last night about eleven o'clock, and I, I was telling Mark, my eyes were getting a little dim because it's eleven point, he told me, it was smaller print, you know, I don't wear glasses, that's the norm, so I was getting tired, but still fascinating, so thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ms. Powers?
I echo the same feelings, I appreciate Mark Clutter's experience, this is his tenth year, his tenth production of a pupil progression plan, um, he's had Ms. Deutschman on his team for a long time, um, as a, in workshops to, um, give input, we're inputs limited as a member. I have a lot of respectful work, Clark, I talked with him before and after the meeting, and just appreciate every single thing he's doing, so, with that said.
We don't have limited input on this committee, this is a full collaborative committee.
But as far as, remember, we still have that obligation to not impede progress, it's an opportunity to see what's going on inside as far as day-to-day operations.
No, Ms. Balfour, this is an expectation that this is a board-appointed committee, this is not a operational committee, this is a, this is a actual policymaking committee, and so, um, I can tell you from being a, I'm the board member, when I first got onto elementary, we made a, a big impact in having, as a board member, bringing to that, in fact, it was asked very much of us as board members, what do you, what is the board looking at as direction from us? Your committees usually are asking for that board input during those meetings.
Thank you. No reaction from this committee.
Let's go on to high school.
Good afternoon, I keep wanting to say good morning, it still feels like morning and maybe it's the, the no windows in here, I'm not sure.
That's because of breakfast.
I'm going to, again, review the high school revisions and additions, and high school had the most revisions and additions, uh, to the progression plan, so what I'd like to do is just read, uh, the bullpen changes that you have, and, uh, highlight the page number and give you an opportunity to get to that page number, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to do my best to answer those questions. Unfortunately, I was not part of the entire process, I was still the principal at Citrus Springs Middle School when a lot of this process took place, uh, but I do have a little bit of background on it, so, again, we have quite a few of those, so we'll move through these and answer any questions as they arise. Uh, the first one is on page sixty-two, added the Academy Environmental Science Terms of Attendance at AES and Base School, and that's on page sixty-two, and that just highlights the plan from nine to twelve, uh, about when and where you'll attend AES or your base school.
Board members, this was something that I had lifted out that we needed to since we had had this discussion, um, and I can tell you, I've even gotten students calling on this, that I felt we needed to make sure that we put this as policy, as part of our curriculum policy.
And this ensures that the student, when they get to their senior year, that there's been plenty of communication and the student is on track to graduate by the time they get to their twelfth grade year. Uh, next, next area, added micro school citrus.
And, Ms. Roll, I want to add to that paragraph, this really isn't a big difference, and Mr. Clark, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but this is really the original practice when we started at AES, so it's really not a change from, from the start, but it's been a change of the practice in the next year.
Okay. And that was why I felt like we finally needed to get it into a, a policy form so that
Make sure.
We had that.
It is correct, and we basically, I pulled the group back together back in two thousand seven, we basically have those common understandings, again, to ensure that we're still, our, our, our responsibility, yeah, to basically get those graduation requirements all met, and there was a good, kind of, collaboration with those entities.
Any other questions or comments on AES?
So, yes, I've got just a comment, so, um, and I remember our discussion, um, when we, we brought that, or that was brought up, that basically they can go their full ninth grade year, and then their tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade year, they go one semester, is that what I'm reading?
Well, in the tenth and eleventh grade year, they would go a semester, and then the twelfth grade year is an option for a semester if they're on track.
If they're on track.
Yeah, and they got their online courses.
Right. So the maximum amount of semesters they could go is two, in their ninth grade year, one in their tenth, one in eleventh, one in the twelfth.
Correct.
Okay.
As long as they're on track in the twelfth.
As long as they're on track in twelfth to graduate.
Right.
And the cour, or the courses are available there. Okay, just, just for my.
It came up this year, Mr. Dodd, I had a conversation with both Ben and the principal, and also that parent, and it was basically that, hey, if they are basically in that twelfth grade and they're on track, and they can have the courses out of Academy Environmental Science and get that graduation requirement.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, the next one is also on page sixty-two, where you added micro school citrus, and it gives the criteria for which students, uh, this school would serve. Any questions about, about that one? Next one is on page, okay.
When the child finishes the courses, where's he graduate from?
They would, uh, graduate from.
Micro school.
Micro school.
Micro school.
Accredited?
Okay.
Page sixty-three on foreign exchange students, it just outlines the process if a student is considering to be involved in the foreign exchange program or, uh, us receiving students from the foreign exchange program, so they make sure that students are, stay on track to graduate, and they know before they leave, before they enter the program, where they are as far as graduation criteria, and that, you know, not all foreign exchange classes count towards graduation, so they just make sure that the child is very aware of, the student, of very aware of what they're getting into.
Board members, that was another issue, and this goes back to, you know, talking about, we had some of these issues come up this past year, and I wanted to make sure that we had this in policy, there seems to be often an, an understanding, but I think it needed to be clarified.
Right, and, and I remember, I was, I was on a plane going to New York or something, anyhow, a, a student on the plane, just one of the foreign exchange students in this county, and so, but school was not yet open yet, so I was wondering, if one of our students was taking off, and, or was she someone's student, then what, what is the story? Sometimes our host parents will take them on a tour, she was by herself, okay, why can't happen? But, but are they?
That's a good try, that one, good try.
Are they our students until they graduate? Or are they our students, I don't know, I just, I would say, well, who's that?
It really depends on what program they're in, they're in Rotary Program, or we've got AGTS that we deal with, foreign exchange students, um, and they have different pools, but yes, they are students for a full year unless they're being sent back.
She was her student. I was worried because, I mean, we're in trouble, you know?
Usually you get all the P pills.
I know. That's true.
I'm surprised they get pictures of students.
Well, I had the name in the pill, but I didn't have, didn't know why.
You gotta hip shoot them with a camera and then send it over.
I do, well, I forgot about that, so I was, you do it, you look it up for me.
And, uh, as you can tell, many of these changes occur out of a. And as you can tell, many of these changes occur out of a, resulting from a specific incident or specific concern or problem that may have arisen during the school year. The next one is on page eight, we're jumping backwards there, but it's the Teenage Parent Alternative Program. And basically it says participation in graduation does not include any other events at the zone school.
And board members, this was another conversation. Mr. Roll, were you there when we got into this? Because we went into this one for a while. You know, the, the teen program has changed. We had it, we used to have it at WTC where, you know, it, you know, it kind of had its own campus and so therefore they weren't necessarily identifying with a specific school. And so this, again, goes back to those incidences that happened. There was some strong feelings on, on the committee about how to handle this. Now that our teen program is at Crystal River High, the idea is, you know, if they're there for a couple of years, they're kind of a, a pirate. On the other hand, if they got there just a couple of months before graduation, they, you know, where are they? I know. Ms. Burderram, she just, she just threw a mullet at me. That's right, that's true. So, so that's where this conversation and, you know, philosophy of what to do. And I think we tried to provide, again, that flexibility of the onsite principle to be able to have some, some flexibility on this.
And I think those principals were wanting some consistent language that they could live with. Next one is page 71, graduation requirements. Added a CTE, industry certification waiver, course code numbers to math and science. And that's on page 71. And that refers to subjects other than biology and then algebra and geometry. Next change on page 81 and flows through to 82. That, again, high school grading, specified moving to a four-point scale for calculation of final grades. And we also added that chart that you saw earlier in the, at the middle school, Mr. Clodger showed for the middle school.
You know, I was, I have to tell you, I was shocked to learn from my own child, who I argued with and still argues about this with, who's, who got an A the first semester and kept convincing me, all he needed was a B the second semester. And I said, you can't, it won't average out to get an A for the course. I said, of course it won't average out, but here's why it does average out in this. And so Doug. And I'm torn because I'm that kid that might have been able to squeak a B one semester, but probably was going to definitely get a C. I get a B the next semester, I mean, or for that, for that grade. And yes, for that kid that bombed one test but could still maintain their A. On the other hand, there's some kids that go, wait a minute, I've shown up for every test, I've aced everything, I've worked and studied, and my B, my, you know, you get an A and a B, and you get an A, and I get, and I get an A and I've worked the same, you know, I've worked twice as hard. So it's a tough call. It is really a tough call.
Well, the state would go back to the A plus A in my system.
Absolutely.
One reason I asked about the athletes, because I remember a couple of years ago, you could get in like a .60 until the eligible.
We didn't have any anymore.
I know, I know.
The guys who were reading the way.
Yeah. No, well, I don't know.
There's a loophole, the students will eventually find it.
Yes.
Next one, page 82. Clarify Plato grades are not issued until the student's completed all unit tests and end of semester tests. That's on page 82. And that's just to ensure that a student in a similar situation that you just talked about doesn't get an A first semester Plato says, I'm not taking anything else because if you average it out, you know, I can still possibly pass that course. So it ensures that the student is exposed to all that curriculum and gives validity to the Plato program. Next one on page 84. Grades that are eligible for forgiveness, these are as, are only those that appear on the transcript and they must be retaken at the credit amount attempted on the transcript. So, you know, we don't issue half credits and a student can't go back and retake a half credit. So they have to take it back to whatever credit is on the transcript. On page 88, there's the chart for the 18-credit Excel graduation option.
A child moving in, is that a child? If they flew in with a D in history, would they get grade forgiveness?
They are available, they can do grade forgiveness.
So here's the monkey wrench. If I pass the EOC on an EOC course, but I get an F, I've earned credit. Now, I won't get the GPA grade, obviously. But I get an NG, but the NG, I thought, could not be put into the system because the transcript doesn't allow for two places. So the only thing that in essence, unless somehow the college audited, is going to be the, the pass that they, it's a pass grade, is it not?
Yes, but your likelihood of getting accepted into the University of Florida could be slim to none.
But I could go to FCU. Oh, I wondered if she was listening.
Option for a student to cap.
Right.
If the EOC is there. And again, that goes back to your previous conversation about the calculation. And Mr. Roll, we reaffirm that the calculation that a student does, we have many brilliant students who may not want to do the work, but may possess the knowledge. So they slide through the term.
Thank you.
They slide through the term, but they're very proficient in their knowledge and they demonstrate it with the highest level of achievement on the test. So the question begs, you know, do you award credit for the student who has mastered the standards? Or because they may be stubborn or lazy at that time in their life, they fail and maybe they do it all, so I think it's a good thing.
You're absolutely correct.
There's no influence on the GPA, there's no grade. However, it's credit awarded and they met the standard requirement to earn the diploma either by credit or by passing the test.
But there's no need for grade forgiveness because it's awarded credit for the course.
Correct. It gains that.
Just wanted to make sure I was still clear on that. They're going to gain that one too. Somebody's going to gain that one. And I agree with it, Mr. Simon, I agree that the state, we should have allowed the capping on it, but, but we're going to get that one or two kids that's smart.
On page 88, Appendix C, you have the 18-credit Excel graduation option chart. You guys are familiar with that. It just spells it out in chart form so that it's very clear and easy, easy to read. And then Appendix D, standard diploma options for students with disabilities, for students entering grade nine. And Ms. Haynes spoke a little bit about that earlier, about graduation options, options for students with disabilities. Any, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
I don't know if you, if you can answer it or give me an explanation, but I'd like to know, why is it that we do not have a class valedictorian? And I know on page 77, I know it shows Kula, or Sula, Magna, and Kulaati. And I was just, as a new board member, I.
I don't have a background on that, so I'm just going to back up here for a minute.
And Mr. Clodger, you can step right up also. Many years ago, there was a group of parents, and their daughter was in their position at that time. And they presented to us that they would like to see this Kulaati town in place of about 14. And that was a board decision, probably 15 years ago. At least. Then all three high schools would do that system instead of.
But we still have a class rank though, correct? You know what you graduate as far as your class rank goes. So there's still a class rank of number one.
Two class ranks. Well, you have a number one.
Okay. So there's still a number one class ranking though, correct? And I guess they could be two different people. Or there could be a lot of unweighted number ones, is that right? My daughters have always been told their class rank as a number, not as an unweighted number, because I guess if you have above a 4.0.
You talk to college, you should tell them what rank.
What rank you are, right. Say again?
They ask for both.
Weighted in.
Okay. So we do have a number one and a number two, but yet we don't want to recognize them as valedictorian, salutatorian because it's unfair to the other students or why?
I don't know that it's unfair, it just was a system that the board approved 15, like you said, well, that'd be 15 years.
I have the other complaints, years and years ago, I don't know, my daughter, we haven't started graduating high school, there were seven kids who graduated and seven were valedictorians. Some kids, so we can't have seven valedictorians, one has seven, we never have any. Very same grade. And people didn't like that, so they decided, we don't, we'll throw the whole thing out and then go to the Mag, as long as they don't leave that same grade. And I just think it was a personal preference, a part of some of the community members, some of the parents, that they preferred having the time with rather, or the Mag, sooner rather than the valedictorian.
And the push back, and I know what year that was, and that was probably the exact same year, when the push came from another high school, not even from Cedar Springs. So there was a pretty large group of parents out there that had to look at it.
I want to tell you, I graduated valedictorian from a high school. I actually, I don't know that you had valedictorian, salutatorian, that's something, I like the way that we do it a little bit better because there was tremendous pressure on the person who's graduating at those levels, valedictorian, salutatorian, everyone's assigned A can or that sort of, or something else, you know? But when you have 40 people graduating, it's a lot, no one person is single out.
Yeah, I know. The speaking. It all came down to the speaking. And I got a call every year in this time of the year is, what do you do? And I said, we don't identify a valedictorian, a salutatorian. We basically have those breakdowns as far as our reflective speeches and then our, you know, missionary speeches. That was a big part of the decision.
So it gives the school district control of who speaks?
Well, no, the school actually opens that opportunity up. They then apply for the speak, the speech, they give their speech, and they have a committee that actually reviews which ones they're actually going to be.
Right, well, that's, I mean, I know, I know how that works, but what I'm saying is that you're saying a part of the reason was because then a committee can pick the speaker rather than the valedictorian automatically speaking.
Or the option is a problem relates to a call from the Tampa Bay Times to us three weeks ago, where Pasco County had 27 valedictorians. So there was a battle. And ultimately, all 27 spoke at graduation because they couldn't come up with a process to decide who merits the stage. So I think part of it is, it does two things when you eliminate it. Now it's open to every student. If it's about the speaking, and you're not the ranking, because the ranks are always there, first through 365. It's at the addressing the graduates. It's open to every student who has a 3.5 or higher. Students can choose to participate because as Ms. Power said, I may be valedictorian, I don't want to do that, but I'm compelled to do that. So now it's open to a student who chooses to. There are criteria, it matches a pattern of reflection, look back, look ahead. So every school has same opportunities to guide their classmates onto what we've done and where we're going. So I think in essence, it's a fairer way. It still recognizes those students, they still have recognition, while we don't name them valedictorian. We also, in essence, can't distinguish between what is a 4.697 and a 4.698? Is there that much discrimination between who is more valedictorian than the next 4.96? So I would tell you, that really is what caused this to say, is that really what's important? So, Mr. Simms, you're a part of that, I think you're on the board with that.
I don't even think our decision was based on the seven speeches that we listened to that year. I think it was a loss to the board at that time, I felt like it was a large group of parents who came and asked why don't we recognize more students during graduation with the higher GPAs, you know? So it really goes back to what philosophy is in the school district. You know, many have gone one way or the other. I don't think there's any one better way than the other, it's just the way they recognize most students.
And several kinds of parents would get in arguments, get in fist-to-cuff select way, but you have two scores so close together. And the valedictorian parents and salutatorian parents would be arguing, they didn't average that correctly. I know in one case, argument's still going on, it was, you know, 20 years ago, they still argue about that. So I think that although it's nice to be recognized as a student who's graduating first or second in the class with an A, valedictorian, salutatorian, I think it's more of a hindrance than a help. And I'd like to see board students recognized because the grades are so close, again, they're such, they perform so much the same.
Well, I saw a story, not from Florida, but from another state where they had over 20 valedictorians. But the point they were making was that colleges and universities today, and I guess this is more in the Northeast, will give scholarships to the valedictorians, guaranteed scholarships if you were a class valedictorian. And so they were pointing out how that helped all those students because they were all eligible for that, that scholarship money. So I didn't know if, you know, it's just something I've kind of wrestled with a little bit, just wanting to understand, you know, why we don't want to recognize the top of the class, or the top two. And if there was a way that if the speeches were the issue, that we could still call someone valedictorian, but not guarantee them the right to speak, which we can do that too as a board.
And the, and I know, because especially it seems like around graduation time, we get calls, particularly it's from those two or three families that, you know, that are saying, well, my kid is ranked. Now, as far as scholarships, Mr. Simon, a scholarship, if you were, the scholarship eligibility has to do with whether you're valedictorian or number one in the class. It's, it has to do with the class ranking, does it not, not necessarily how it's referred to?
Florida does a little bit differently. Florida university systems do those scholarships differently. And every Florida university is even different in it. But typically, the future polls that these scholarships are awarded based on combinations, it's not just valedictorian, it's looking at their ACT or SAT or PSAT score, or national merit qualification, their GPA, their rank in class. There's also even top 20, there are multiple criteria. So I'm not sure, and I grew up in the era of, you were valedictorian, it's a salutatorian era as well, so we grew up in that kind of culture defined. But I believe it's a whole, there's a different philosophy there. You're right, Mrs. Simms, what the school district community feels is best, is the best way to recognize those high-performing students because it really doesn't lead to a type of scholarship or a rank, or because you're not, you don't get that scholarship. I will say, remind our board that most scholarships that are awarded now are linked to standardized tests combined with GPA in school combined with leadership experiences that those kids have.
And Mr. Don, I don't know if I read the same article, but I read a couple of those university systems. And I read that they do honor valedictorian, my first thought was, well, the valedictorian was a lot. One, two, three, and four. And my thinking is, we have a lot of ranking for, so I would think if you're one, you're valedictorian for a person in class, I would think you have the same opportunity for scholarship.
Right. Well, this article that I saw was, said that they do, there are scholarships out there just for the valedictorian, if you were a class valedictorian. So, you know, that's just something I, I just want to, like I said, kind of understand that thought, the board's thought better on that because I'm still, I still kind of wrestle with it a little bit, but I appreciate it.
But if you're a number one in your class, then you would earn that. You may not have the name valedictorian, but if I'm, if I'm the 4.69 kid and I'm number one, then I would earn, or my guidance council would recommend you for that scholarship.
And, and you know.
Just claiming.
And Doug, I've struggled with it since being on here too. One of the, one of the times in. One of the, one of the times, and you know, you've lived, you're living it as well, is I took the AP Calculus course and did this, and I got a high B. Of course, now a high B, you do it, you know, twice, you almost can get an A. But, but, but you do that, and the other kid took Psychology. And the weighting of it works out where one has a higher GPA than the other by a tenth of a point. And in reality, well, there was a far greater rigor to one than to the other. And so it's, it's a struggle, and I don't think we have a perfect system, I really don't.
I think giving the principals flexibility and a high school administrator during their awards ceremony, if they chose to just announce all of those, in fact, to what Mrs. Powers said, that ranking, there can be multiples that are achieving that level that would rank them as a number one. And getting empowering the principals to make that decision and encouraging, getting spotlighting those high achievers at an awards ceremony would be a great idea. But I, I love the way we work the opportunities for those speaking engagements with all of the, the energy and the commitment of writing that comes from those students that are not always at the very, very top of the class. It's, I've read so many of the speeches, trying to figure out at the academy which ones to choose, and it becomes a very big challenge for the team out there at the high school level that has to make the decision who gets to speak. But it's, it is a challenge. Thank you for your voice.
And, and Doug, that was really what Pat Deitchman in the newspaper realized when they created the Golden Citrus, was to say that, and then to try and acknowledge specific areas. So with that, I just wanted to thank the, the high school People Progression Plan Committee. Thank you, Mr. Rollins, for, for pinch hitting. Ms. Nobles had chaired that, and I just value tremendously the input of, of our staff there. Mr. Clower, thank you for being there and.
Yeah, just to kind of remind her, she is at the Abbott training that's going on this week. Abbott is going on, so she's facilitating that, so, thank you.
Thank you. We are going to adjourn at one o'clock now, and we are going to go directly into a closed door administrative hearing. Board members, if you turn your mics on.